Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April Budget Hearing where we will review the 2021 budget. In the end of March, the budget was presented to the Board and adopted in the sense that the Board members could then dive into it, ask questions, and gather any information around the numbers that they needed to make an educated vote. Tonight, our Business Administrator and Superintendent will go into the details, and the Board will vote on the budget next Tuesday, May 7. With that being said, can we have the Statement of Compliance, Ms. Good?
Let me know if you can hear me. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJF-10, column 4-6. Proper public notice that the meeting was published in the local papers on April 24, 2020. If any Board member or a member of the public in attendance believe that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make all in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CNBC-TV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting quarter will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through our district home page. The Hoboken Board of Education is permitted to preserve the quorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of cell phones and electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, I request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to pursue personal business.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Calamatory?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Ms. Delator?
Here.
Ms. Anna?
Here.
Ms. Cuffel?
Um, he's unmuted.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Secaria?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Good, our Business Administrator.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. I'm presenting the 2020-2021 Hoboken Board of Education budget. This is the preliminary. This is the budget, and it will be submitted to the State of New Jersey in its final form next week after you vote on it on May 7. The Hudson County Superintendent of Schools Office approved the budget in April, excuse me. Therefore, we were allowed, once they approved the budget, for us to advertise the budget for the full publicity here. Next page.
All right, I'll put it up.
Go to page 3, please, Chris. Okay. So what happens is, this is the Business Office Budget Calendar that you see in front of you, and this documents the budget process that has been conducted by the Business Office. The State of New Jersey provided us with the budget documents on December 27, 2019. On January 10, 2020, I informed all the principals and/or the directors in the district on what their allocation would be for fiscal year 2021. Their allocations in some instances were flat, and others it was not. On January 20, all budgets were due to the Business Office and/or any questions that they had or additional funding that they may need for different programs and projects for next fiscal year were discussed and included in the budget by way of a wish list if they exceeded the allocations that were granted to them for next year. My office reviewed all the budgets. My office met with the Technology Department to work with them on developing the full technology budget for next year, and that includes any upgrades to technology, any phone books that needed to be purchased, any whiteboards that needed to be purchased. Then we moved down to the Professional Development Budget, in which I met with the Assistant Superintendent to discuss her needs for professional development for fiscal year 2020-21. Next page, please. On February 20, in February, I entered the preliminary budget into System 3000, and in March, the budget was then entered into the state software. The budget was submitted to the County Office for review and approval after the Board reviewed the budget in March. The Hudson County Office approved the budget at the end of March, which allowed us to advertise for the public hearing, and today is the public hearing, and on May 7, you will vote on adopting the 2020 budget. Okay, 2% tax levy increase, the $966,136. Christine is going to highlight what's in the budget for the 2% tax levy increase and the 7.9% enrollment adjustment waiver for the additional 296-plus students that we are expecting next year.
Okay, so this is an extremely unique year because, in addition to the 2% tax levy increase, we're also seeing an enrollment adjustment waiver that we actually tried to separate out to make it a little bit easier for people to understand the difference between the two categories of tax levies. Although, in the end, they're both going to be combined for one overall tax levy increase, it's kind of important for the community to understand that they really are for two separate purposes. So if you look at the 2% tax levy increase, which totals $966,136, that is the allowable tax levy increase as determined by the New Jersey Department of Education for all school districts in the State of New Jersey. Within that 2% tax levy increase, for us as a school district, it includes our salary and benefits, our contractual salaries and benefits. It also maintains our current staffing level. So within that 2% tax levy increase, we are not decreasing staff members, and we are not increasing staff members within the 2% tax levy increase. It also maintains all of our curriculum development and implementation on the cycle that we have set. So, for example, every year, the Board of Education knows that we have some new curriculum initiatives, and some content areas are in what we call maintenance, and then some are in Year 3, which is a kind of a review and adjust and modify, and then we go back to a new curricular cycle. So with that being said, this particular 2% tax levy increase allows us to stay on that curriculum cycle and implementation cycle. So if you recall, two years ago, we did a pretty extensive overhaul in the areas of language arts literacy and science. Last year, we did a pretty large-scale overhaul in the area of mathematics. Next year, or the 2020-2021 school year, you're going to see that we are going to go back into that cycle. We won't be touching science, but we will be looking at creating some new programs in the area of social studies. We will be updating our middle school mathematics curriculum, and we will also be expanding our ELA curriculum as well. So in addition to that curriculum development and implementation cycle, this particular 2% tax levy increase also maintains all of our programs, all of the programs that are in existence. So you may wonder, what kind of programs are we talking about? We're not just talking about co-curricular and extracurricular programs, but we're also talking about things that other school districts have struggled with a little bit and have taken out of their curriculum. So, for example, some of the related arts, the arts, music, theater, et cetera, world languages. This 2% tax levy increase allows us to keep all of those related arts intact and not have to eliminate or cut any of those programs or positions. So that's the 2% tax levy increase, and that's what we are utilizing that money for. In one of the later slides, Joyce is actually going to break that out further for you, but at a bird's-eye view, that's what that is taking care of. This 7.95% enrollment adjustment waiver that totals $3.7 million is an area that deserves and requires additional conversation. That enrollment adjustment waiver was actually calculated by the New Jersey Department of Education for the district and put into our software package because the Department of Education has anticipated 296 additional students for the 2020-2021 school year. We've been watching that number very closely in terms of projections to see if we think we will actually hit the 296 students. That would have given us the leeway to adjust the enrollment waiver a little bit and maybe come to you and say, we don't need the entire adjustment waiver, we only need a portion of it because we're only anticipating, for example, 100 additional students. The fact is, right now, we're only in April nearing May, and we're already well over 300 students, additional students for the following school year. Now, that number could vary a little bit, either up or down, but we are absolutely going to be at that 300-plus student mark for the upcoming school year. So what does that mean? When you have 300 additional students, what does that mean? Can they be absorbed in your traditional budget, in your general fund, within that 2% tax levy increase? So the answer to that question is yes, if you're talking about 50 students, that kind of gets sprinkled across the board. But when you're talking about 300-plus students, I want you to think about it from the perspective of an elementary school. One of our elementary schools in the district is Connors Elementary School. Connors Elementary School currently services 235 students. We're talking about adding almost an additional school on the basis of enrollment numbers across the board. And so, as a result of that, can we absorb all of those students into our already existing classrooms? The answer to that is no, because if you recall last year with our cut-in state aid that we had last year, we had already increased our class sizes to that 21-student mark for our elementary grades up to the 22-23 mark at the upper elementary grades. So we actually can't absorb anymore, and that means that we have to add additional sections. Additional sections then mean additional staff members. Additional staff members and additional sections actually equal additional supplies, materials, technology, professional development for new staff members. There's a whole host of things that come along with it, but I want you to keep in perspective that we are talking about 300 children. It's a lot of children to be adding. So as a result of that, we had to think about technology upgrades and additional services and equipment for all of those children. And as you know, we've been talking about this for a number of months, in fact, well over a year, two years, probably even two and a half to three years, our long-range facilities plan. And that long-range facilities plan requires us to budget for architectural and legal fees for facilities planning, because at some point, that's something that we're going to have to think long and hard about how we are actually going to house all of the students that are coming into the schools. With additional children comes the expansion of programs that we already have in place. So rather than pulling programs away, programs that we have such as Passport to Learning or Passport to Wellness, or even at the high school level, our extracurricular activities and our athletic programs, they are all going to increase. Our music program, our theater program, our choral program are all going to increase as a result of these extra students. And so, in order to be prepared for it, the 7.95% actually covers that. And to put that in perspective, we were kind of talking about it a little bit earlier today. When you break that number down, we're talking about a number that ranges somewhere between your $12,000 and $13,000 a student. So although it's not a pure per pupil allocation, you can almost make a correlation between that overall number, the 3.7 million, and the 296 or 300 students that we're anticipating, and how much money would be allocated per child. And that allocation is somewhat in line with districts that only have elementary and middle schools without a high school, districts that are not required to fulfill all of the former abbot requirements, and so on and so forth. So that's what that 7.95% is for, and we can have a discussion further about it, but Ms. Good will get into some of the details regarding both the 2% and the 7.95% as we move forward.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the operating budget for 2021. For all our regular programs and instruction, this is all the schools. Their budget totals $16,838,92. That is 25.72% of the budget. Employee benefits, which are 15.85% of the benefits, comes to $10,352,480. Our charter school payment is 15.83% of this budget, which comes to $10,339,573.
And Ms. Good, just one point on the charter school, just so everyone is clear. The 2% tax levy includes the cost of the charter school payments.
Correct. Absolutely correct. School-sponsored activity, the co-curricular and athletic program is $1.3 million. It's 2.06% of the budget, and so note that it does include the expanded athletic program and co-curricular program. Our maintenance budget is at $1.4 million, which represents 2.15% of our budget, and our child study team is $1.6 million and represents 2.5%. However, that number does not represent our special ed instructional programs, which are $3.2 million, which is 4.97% of our budget. We also have district outside students, students that are placed outside of the district. And at this time, or when the budget was developed, our current student population that would be moving forward at that time in March, the tuition was estimated at $2.6 million, which was just under 4% of the budget. I can assure you, that number is probably increased now with the new enrolled, the new students that will be enrolling for next year. On Central Service and Administration, which is the Superintendent's Office, the Business Office, the Assistant Superintendent's Office, and the Director of Guidance Office, is $2.2 million. Transportation, the estimate is $1.9 million, just under $2 million at 2.97%. Are there any questions? Next slide, please. Our revenue, excuse me, other operating budgets. Potential facility needs, as Christine has spoken about, we put a budget of $535,000 in, which is very low, to address some of our facility concerns. Our improvement of Instruction Department budget is $537,386. And our education media services is just under 1% at $562,196. Our speech OT and PT, which is his related services, so it's not incorporated into the special education budget, and it comes in at 1.28%. This budget, this dollar amount may need to be increased next year, depending on the number of students that we receive that would require services. We, security budget is under 1%, which is 400,000, and our passport to learning budget for next year has been increased by $50,000 up to 300,000 to support the additional students that would be coming into our district. Our food service, we are supplementing our food service by $250,000. And then the support service, General Administration, is $1.1 million. Are there any questions? Please, next slide, please.
Okay, I'll take this. Yeah, so there are three key budget drivers for this particular budget. The first is the charter school payments. For the 2020-2021 school year, those payments are, you'll see just over $10 million, $10,339,573. Another key driver is special education tuition costs. So while we do see that projected amount, that amount is actually in there as a result of student IEPs. I can tell you that, you know, there would seem to be a logical correlation between an increase in enrollment and an increase in out-of-district tuition. That doesn't always happen, especially when the district has an eye on creating either new programs or enhancing the programs that are already in existence within the district. So to give you a perfect example, the Special Education Department is enhancing the ADA Autism Program to include a host of additional services that we could actually provide within the district and experiences for children. And the intent of that is not only to keep children who maybe are new to the district in the district without an out-of-district placement, but also to provide an option for parents that is not only more beneficial for the child because they would be integrated within their community and the school within their community, but also within a program that we think could be not only more beneficial, but a program that would be more rich than something that they might be receiving out of districts. So we're working very hard on that. We're bringing a outside agency in called Effective School Solutions at the middle level grades in order to provide support for children that need it in an alternative manner. So we believe that will also help with the special education costs. So this is one of the key budget drivers that I'm feeling very hopeful about, that rather than that cost continuing to increase, that we would be able to embrace that cost, maybe even lower the cost, but provide our families and our children with programs that would not only benefit them more than if they were going out of district, but those that would make the parents and the families feel more comfortable keeping their child within their own community. And then our last key budget driver, which just seems to keep popping up, and although the number doesn't seem to be so high, in the grand scheme of things, it's a fairly large increase, and that is student transportation costs. So the increase of the student transportation costs, you'll see, is $129,996. The community tends to, or pretty much anyone looking at this, tends to equate that dollar figure automatically with transportation for out-of-district-placed children for schools out of district. That's not necessarily the case. So student transportation costs that increase, it could be a whole host of reasons why that number is like that. It could be the change in routes, it could be the consolidation or lack thereof consolidation of routes, depending on where children are placed in out-of-district schools. It is the increase in the athletic program offerings for away games. It's also the increase in the amount of teams that are offered. So in other words, while we may have boys' basketball, for example, or girls' basketball, for example, if we have a year where there are a large number of students trying out and playing on that team, we may be running a freshman team, a junior varsity team, and a varsity team. We see that with football, we see that with softball in particular, although we're not seeing it this school year, baseball, that's another one. And so as a result of that, the student transportation costs do increase. And the Hudson County routes that we're seeing, both coming into Hudson County and going out of Hudson County, are increasing. Those routes are increasing. So that's why we actually are seeing that and have that posted as a key budget driver as well. So if anyone has any questions on that, by all means, you can jump in and ask.
Next slide, please. Okay, our revenue. Our local tax levy for next year is predicted at 53, well, actually is budgeted at $53,114,030. Our tuition revenue is $130,000. The tuition revenue is for students that would be coming into Hoboken from other surrounding towns within Hudson County. within Hudson County. Our rent revenue is 1,025,000 dollars. Our miscellaneous revenue is 520,204 dollars. Our state aid is 8.9 million dollars. Our federal aid is estimated at 94,000 dollars. And we have a budgeted fund balance, which means the money that we did not spend in this year's budget, we will, it was budgeted into next year's budget, which is 1.5 million dollars for a total budget of 65, total general fund budget of 65,324,803 dollars. Next slide, please. So our revenue projections, which I just went through. This is the same projections I just discussed, which are placed on a pie chart. And on this chart, you could see that the local taxpayer is the biggest driver for our budget and then followed by the state aid that we receive. Any questions? Next slide, please. In Hoboken, the average assessed property value in Hoboken for this fiscal year, this fiscal year that we're currently in, 2020, is 524,500 dollars. And the average assessed house will increase annually their taxes by 252.44. Any questions?
No, I just want to jump in and say, today I undertook an analysis on my own, just looking at my own school taxes over the last few years. And I think, you know, we're using an estimated rate that we received from the city in order to calculate this. I think the other tricky thing is that, to note, is that the city operates on a calendar year basis. And the district operates on a June 30 year end. So the impact of this budget will straddle two fiscal years from a city taxing perspective. But that's just a note.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Are there any questions? Thank you.
I just wanted to jump in and say, I think it's, it's a smart way to look at this increase. While, you know, looking at it together, it looks like a, a high tax levy increase, but splitting it between the 2%, which, as you mentioned, every school district in New Jersey is allowed to take for normal increases in operating costs, salaries, et cetera. And then looking at it from an enrollment perspective and the drastic enrollment increase, which is a great problem to have. But, you know, 300 kids is, is a lot of kids. So I think breaking it into two buckets is, is smart. And I also, you know, the 2% also captures the state aid funding that, that the district lost. So we're making up for that in in, in the 2%, right?
I just, just to jump in to anticipate a question that may have. On the revenue projections for tuition, each year we talk about this, this little piece of the pie as a revenue projection, which is tuition. And people say, well, what is that? And we always explain that that's tuition for children that are coming from another district and coming into Hoboken to be educated. But sometimes people get confused that that's school choice. And so I just want to make sure that we know that we need to separate, break, separate those two things out because this tuition that we're talking about right here is really the child, the, as a scenario, the child from Weehawken who needs an ABA program that may not be operating in Weehawken. So we accept that child as a tuition-based student in our ABA program. Or it could be a child in a different school district that needs a different program that we might offer, that their district doesn't offer. So it has nothing at all to do with school choice. It has to do with a program placement.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions on the budget? I know we've been through most of this in the end of March, and we've had a chance, a chance to ask our questions between then and now.
Okay. Can I ask one question, Sangley? Dr. Johnson, I know that the, the, the revenue, the revenue projections, or I'm sorry, the, the calculation of anticipated students enrollment growth that came from the state, which drove that enrollment adjustment. That's the number regardless of how many students we get. So if we get 350 students.
That's correct.
We're, we're absorbing those 350 in the calculation based on whatever that was, 200 and right?
And, and then what will happen is next year, if the state calculates another enrollment increase, they will, they will most likely be able to capture what they didn't capture the year before, just because they're actually looking at overall numbers. And what we do know from a projection perspective is that we are growing between 200 and 300 students a year. When that will level off, we're not 100% sure. But we do know that it's not going to end this year, and it's certainly not going to end next year.
Thank you. Could you remind me, if you remember, you have this offhand, what the current anticipated actual number is? I realize it could change. Obviously, it's only April, but what, in terms of enrollment, do you happen to know what that is?
Yeah, I can, I can check for you in one second. If there are some questions, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me check. That's what preschool though. So, so I'm, I'm going to, to check on that while anyone else has any other questions. The, our overall district pre-K to 12 is, is expanding even more because the Department of Education has calculated an extra four preschool classrooms. I think I told you that in the first week of the registration, we had hit 550 pre-K 3 enrollees just in that first week. But over the weekend, and now we're on what's called rolling registration. The pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 numbers just keep coming in, keep coming in. So it looks like we were pretty close to the number of seats and the number of applicants for pre-K 3 within the bounds of the regular registration. But then beyond, those numbers just continue to go up.
And that's a good point. I think that's probably worth clarifying. That, that enrollment adjustment allowance and count is K through 12.
That is correct.
Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, we can move on to the agenda at this point?
Yes, we do have a few things on the agenda tonight. Two things I wanted to point out. Tonight, we have a resolution for a new contract for Dr. Johnson, which will run from 2020 to 2025. We thank you for sticking with us and for all that you've done to make our district what it is and what we'll continue to do together. And I also see there's two resignations on the agenda, Mr. and Mrs. Mazzone, who are both longtime teachers in the district, both at Wallace right now. And while there's some time before July, I wish them the very best in their upcoming retirement. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say or any questions? If not, we can go to public comments on agenda items.
There are no comments on agenda items only.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have the roll call, please. Good.
Ms. Cattamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Lera?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Clucko?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Sicario?
Yes.
Ms. Sangley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I ask, who did the second?
Me, Chitali.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on agenda and non-agenda items?
Yes, Ms. Roseanne Versace.
Ms. Versace?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
So before I comment on the agenda, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry. I just wanted to take a moment to extend the condolences of the members of the Hoboken Education Association to the family of head custodian and president of the Hoboken School Employees Association, Gary White, who passed away on April 10th. He was not only a fellow president and union brother, but he was also a pillar of the Hoboken community, serving as a coach and referee in youth sports for many years. If you played basketball on the courts in Ford Street Park, you knew Gary. Born and raised in Hoboken, he embodied the mantra, once a Red Wing, always a Red Wing. He was a man of deep faith and a real gentleman. And it's an irreplaceable loss for the district and the community. And all who knew him loved him and worked with him. And our hearts and prayers go out to his wife Christine, his children, grandchildren, and all his family and friends at this difficult time. Now I'd like to comment on agenda items. And tonight I am commenting on agenda item 5.01, numbers one and two. The resignations of Frank Mazzone and Josephine Mazzone. It's hard to even know where to begin when you try to encapsulate a total of 90 years of dedicated service to the students of Hoboken into a few short minutes. So forgive me if I go a bit over time. I think it's only fitting that I give each, each of them their due. Mrs. Mazzone is the epitome of the word dedication. She puts her all into everything she does. And of course, teaching and our students have been the beneficiaries of that for the past 45 years. In the 13 years that we've been colleagues, I've never seen her sit at her desk and take a break during her prep or her lunch. She's always moving at a frenetic pace, making copies decorated in her classroom, grading papers, or getting ready for the next class period. When I've spoken in the past about teachers who buy food or clothing for their students, while she isn't the only one, she's the one I'm always having in mind. I recall a story of a student several years ago who was considered homeless because she was living with relatives. I remember Josephine shopping for clothes for the little girl and bringing them into hers so she wouldn't go without. Years ago, when it was okay for teachers to do such things, she took her students to New York City and gave them a cultural experience they would not have otherwise had on their own. These are just a few examples of an entire career marked by one selfless act after another. Even now, during remote learning, when she is nearing the finish line, her focus is on her students. She works feverishly every day to make sure they are getting the most out of the remote experience by planning lessons and finding resources even on the weekends. She worries that some, some students and even parents are finding it difficult and stressful, and she spends countless hours each day emailing and calling them to make sure they are okay. During a conversation we had a short time ago, she shared she feels bad for the students and the fact that she won't be able to give them a proper goodbye before they move on to third grade. That is the kind of person Mrs. Mazzone is and has always been. Her entire career has been spent at Wallace School, and generations of Hoboken children who were lucky enough to call Mrs. Mazzone their teacher still return to say hello and express their love for her. If you've ever been in her company when she sees a former student, you know the excitement and elation on their face and the gratitude they express to her for being someone they've admired and looked up to. Teaching has gone in many different directions over the years, but at its core is the heart and soul of the teacher. The love, compassion, and caring that they show for their students goes beyond any academic innovation or grade they give. This is Mrs. Mazzone. And for those of us who know her simply as Josephine, our Hoboken Public School District and Wallace colleague and friend, we admire you, we look up to you, and we will miss you terribly. Now Frank Mazzone, where do I even begin? Hand on heart, I can say you won't find a greater advocate for the children or the teachers of the Hoboken Public School District or education than Frank Mazzone. Mr. Mazzone spent the first two days of his teaching career at Connor School and has been at Wallace ever since. The love his current and former students have for him is so clearly evident. I have also been in his company when former students run into him and tell him how he straightened them out and put them on the right path, or how he taught them things they wouldn't have otherwise learned, or how they just loved him as a teacher. While tough and firm, as he had to be, his soft-heartedness has always shined through. His closet filled with snacks and cookies for his students is clear evidence of that. But his career in education has been so much more. For over 43 years, he has been the face of the Hoboken Public School District, more so than probably anyone else. If you talk to anyone in Hoboken or Hudson County about education, they know Frank because he has been the go-to guy whenever you've needed to get anything done. As a teacher and staff advocate, you won't find a more staunch supporter. He has been the person they rely on for advice and more times than not, to have a shoulder to cry on. When it comes to education legislation, Frank is the one so many legislators turn to. He counts among his close friends, the current officers of NJEA, and countless other local association presidents. He's on a first-name basis with our county and state legislators, and they call him for advice on education. If you've ever attended a fundraiser with him, don't turn your head because he's gone in a flash, working the room, speaking with senators, assembly people, and congressmen. It's really unbelievable to watch, and he doesn't take no for an answer. Over the past 43 years that he's been involved in association matters, he's been on the front lines of every fight for our students, teachers, and our district, whether it be school funding, charter school expansion, or negotiations. But most of all, he has been a dear friend. Not just to me, but to everyone he has encountered in his storied career in Hoboken. While he won't take no for an answer when he wants to get something done, he also won't accept the word no when he wants to help you. When the question comes up, who would you want in a foxhole with you? I don't even have to take a second to come up with an answer. It's Frank. He's the most selfless, generous, and giving person I know. It's easy to see how he and Josephine wound up together and have stayed married for 39 years, despite the fact that they work side by side together. It saddens me that they won't get the elaborate send-off that they deserve. I had hoped when this day finally came and they submitted their retirement letters, I would make this speech in an auditorium filled with teachers, parents, and former students, that we would all give them a standing ovation, and then we'd hear a few words from Frank. But it was not meant to be. When we were talking a few days ago, Frank said he came into the district quietly, and he'll be exiting the district quietly too. Maybe there's something poetic about that. He has always done what he felt was right and in the best interest of others. He never did it for the recognition or the accolades. He did it because that is Frank. Nevertheless, on behalf of the teachers, staff, students, parents, and all the people that he and Josephine have touched in their combined 90 years of educational service, I say thank you, and we will miss you both more than you will ever know. God bless you and grant you a long, healthy, and happy God bless you and grant you a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Versace. Thank you for recognizing Mr. White and our hearts and thoughts go out to his family. And it's such a sad time to have the news of the Mazzone's retirement, which is such a happy thing for them to be moving on to the next phase in their life. So hopefully sooner than later, we can have that celebration for them and send them off on a high note. But with that being said, that concludes our meeting. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourns, thank you.